Called order, the City of Columbia, a city council meeting on this December fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. I'd like to ask Dan to give us the invocation, and then we will rise and join in on the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Lord, we acknowledge your presence among us tonight. We know you're always with us, and we pray for your guidance during this meeting. Give us the wisdom to work in the best interest of everyone in our community. In your name we pray. Amen.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag. Yeah, may I call the roll?
Souter?
Here.
McBane?
Here.
Liston?
Here.
DiTilio?
Here.
Here.
Banner?
Here.
Noel?
Here.
Willard?
Here.
Hudson?
Here.
You all received a copy of the November twenty-first meeting minutes. Are there any questions or comments on those minutes? Hearing none will be adopted as submitted. We do not have any direct reading of communications tonight, but we'd like to take this opportunity to make some adjustments to our agenda tonight. So I'd like to start out and ask if we could have a motion to concur with City Manager Lance Willard and Chief of Police Bill Myers to appoint Gavin Rambo to the auxiliary police force for the City of Columbia.
Don move.
Second.
Motion second. Yeah, may I call the roll?
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
DiTilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Swearing our officer.
Solomon Square, support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
Constitution of the State of Ohio.
Constitution of the State of Ohio.
Charter and ordinance to modify the offices of the City of Columbia.
And the charter by ordinances of the City of Columbia.
And though I have faithfully discharged my duties.
I will faithfully discharge my duties.
As auxiliary officer.
As auxiliary officer.
To which I've been appointed.
To wish I've been appointed.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
This point, I would like to turn the agenda over to our present council. Skip listing. We're going to have to replace Dan on council. And we've had four people run for council this last, this last election. I think most of us have probably had an opportunity. I know I've had an opportunity to talk to both the first time candidates and was pleased with both of them. And because of that, I'd like to submit John Angus's name to replace Dan and take over Dan's last two years of his term.
You're making that as a motion?
I'd like to have a motion from council.
I'll make some, I'll make a motion.
A second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any further motions or nominations at this point? Hearing none, I will take a vote on the motion.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
DiTilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Motion carries. Congratulations, John.
Congratulations, John.
Look forward to having you up here with us.
With, with that, we'll, we'll swear John in the next meeting. The nineteenth.
Be sworn in at the next meeting. Hey. I'm gonna re, I'm gonna move to recognitions of persons desiring to appear. And first, we have Dan Davis representing PhD Manufacturing, presenting a check to the Columbia Boosters for twenty-five thousand dollars toward the stadium complex restoration project.
PhD Manufacturing has been in Columbia since nineteen seventy-seven. We believe in supporting our community, and at this time, it is our great pleasure to present the check for twenty-five thousand dollars toward the Firestone Stadium restoration.
Next on the agenda, we have Kelly Williamson, Scott Carring, Kathy Davies, and Don Mook, representing Columbia School Board to discuss the CRA program. For the strength of giving some clarification.
Excuse me.
Your. Okay. For the sake of clarification, the letter that you presented to us allowed, this on November seventh.
Right.
It was signed by you and Scott.
Yes.
What? Who, who is giving us that letter?
Well, we're on the CRA Committee, the Commercial Committee that meets with, for the CRAs. That is why we signed the letter. But we've been in communication, all of our communication goes with our whole board. We sit down and, and talk about these things regularly, as we have with the city council members that are on the CRA Committee.
Okay.
We basically gave.
My next question.
Okay.
Is on November ninth, I hand-delivered this letter to the schools with a carbon copy, and sent it to you because you were president, and a carbon copied all three of you. And I indicated in that letter that the city does not want to do any harm to the school district. And I furthermore asked that it would be better if we could have a meeting, a working group session, to discuss all the ramifications and matters regarding the meeting. You didn't respond to my letter.
Well, our response was, we, we gave you a proposal, and that's why we're here today. We said we were coming back on December fifth to discuss, after you seen the proposal, what, what kind of things you could come up with with that proposal.
Okay, so in other words, you couldn't call and told me that?
Well.
Why did you just ignore my letter?
We said we were coming on December fifth. You gave a letter. We don't, we wouldn't, we wanted to meet with the whole council. That was the whole reason why we came to begin with. We started these CRAs four years ago, and we'd never addressed, we addressed council for the first time this past in November. And we just need, we just think it's, we just think it's needed for the whole council. And, and, and in all fairness, we've been in the meetings, and we've been attacked by certain council members telling us to do our job. So we want all council present, so, you know, we can discuss these things.
Let me explain to you that what you are requesting is really outside of the structure of how our council works. Your letter that you gave to us involves hundreds of thousands of dollars over a number of years. It has a lot of information in it that we feel we should share. And we feel, we disagree with you, that we feel this kind of format is not appropriate. But since you give us no choice, I, I think we have no, no other choice but to respond to you tonight without having that meeting that I think would be much more beneficial for all of us. So.
Excuse me. If I could, just real quick. And, and I understand that we want to meet behind closed doors, okay? That's, that's what your proposal was. To try to work out a structure of where we're at with this. But there's just a couple things I wanted to interject. Number one, and this is the all-city council and yourself. Do all of you believe that by the CRA for fifteen years, with the individual CRAs that you've approved, every one of them, that those students and those individuals that are living in that particular development, do you believe that the school has been and will continue to be injured based on those people not paying their property taxes? Because.
And I want to answer that question. That sounds a good question.
And I'm, I'm not done yet. I'm not, I'm not done yet. Okay, I'm not done. Those individuals that have moved in those houses, if the CRA wasn't there, then those people would be paying taxes of which we would be receiving. But because of the CRA, they're not paying any. So I have to, to look at and say, how hard is it for council to understand that if we would have been receiving that money, if there was no CRA, and now we're not? How we're not losing, and we're still educating thirty-nine children out of that development, which for the next fifteen years, so well over the CRA, will be not receiving those dollars other than, other than your income tax, which is one percent. Go ahead.
Okay, so that's what we want to talk about. And as I said at the beginning, we don't want to do harm to the school. That is not our intent. So to answer your questions, and do you have a packet for them? Um, we decided to do our research and try to analyze and try to determine how to deal with the issue you brought up in your letter about the burden, and you have stressed, Scott, the burden that you have received. And I want to say that we did our research, and I want to remind you that on back in twenty-two, the County Department of Economic Development did a study that was presented by Dr. Maratha, correct? He did a complete study. You were at the study.
Geography professor, not a finance professor, but a geography professor.
And, and we also, we also went ahead and took our time to study the school districts, a five-year financial forecast. And by the way, very detailed, comprehensive report of your financial status. And it gave us an opportunity, and we also reviewed your agreement with APL Properties, which you have signed with them, correct? We studied all those agreements. And in this packet of information we've given you, you will see that from the study, we decided to compare, compare your financial situation with the financial situation of Crestview and Springfield Local Schools, mostly because they both have a one percent income tax, and they also have similar sized pop, school population. And we took a, we took.
Entirely different funding. Absolutely.
Well, well, I, I have the floor, okay? I'm gonna make a presentation, and when I finish my presentation, I will definitely let all of you speak. Good. So. And, and by the way.
I know you have the floor, but this study.
No.
We completely, absolutely, positively take that study and say, it was absolutely incorrect. It was wrong, so we will not even continue with that conversation with the study, but we'll allow you to go.
I want, and if you recall, when you came here.
Yes, sir.
On November seventh, we never interrupted you.
Absolutely.
You made the entire presentation starting to finish. So in that study, as we've shown you, we took a look, we took a snapshot from two thousand and eighteen till to two thousand and twenty-three with, with the information we got out of your five-year plan and compared it to those other school districts. And we developed some charts, and we looked at things like your income tax receipts, your total property taxes, your property taxes over those years, your unreserved fund balances for those, for those periods of years. The thing that is interesting to me is that in every one of those cases, in all those cases, and you can see the other school districts as well, have experienced a considerable increase. In fact, you know, you're, you know, you've received very good school funding at that period of time. We've also noted from the study that your, your student enrollment is actually flat or has actually dropped off in the last year. So it seems to me that thirty-nine students added to the school that has a lower popul, you know, has a reduced population. It isn't, so to us now, to us, it's not affecting your school staffing. It shouldn't. It hasn't, your, your indices indicate that your income is all up. In fact, it's very interesting to me that in two thousand and eighteen, you've got one point eight million dollars in in your income tax receipts, and in two thousand and twenty-three, your report said it would be two point eight million dollars in receipts. So, you know, that's a fifty-one percent increase. So the thing that's interesting to us is that when you look at Dr. Maratha's report that he did, and we look at the statistics we have, it's indicative of us that that he was pretty much on target with his projections in his report, and as the period of time has moved on, those numbers have, have come to place. So, you know, we go back to that Dr. Maratha study, and he made a proposal in there and said that, you know, he laid out a scenario, which is in this packet, which talks about if we do the CRA, which is a comprehensive citywide program, that we should consider the income from all the new housing that was built under the CRA and all the revenues that are generated. And then, as you said in your report last month, we take the, the expense that the school district has, and we subtract one from the other. If there's a difference in that, then I think he's saying we should work out some sort of agreement to compensate you for that amount of money. The interesting thing is that your study, your actual agreement that you, you reached with APL Properties actually does that.
That's exactly correct.
It actually does it.
Absolutely.
It actually does.
With Strohary.
And you negotiated that with.
That's correct.
Mr. Strohary.
Absolutely.
Okay, so we have a consultant which says, this is what you should do. We have you actually doing what he said you should do. And so, you know.
Not what our proposal says?
So.
Exactly what it says.
Your proposal says something totally different.
Oh, I don't know about that.
You don't take into consideration the other hundred and sixty or seventy homes, their income, and no, you don't. Not in the proposal.
What I would suggest, Mr. Noel, is that Mr. Hudson work with our attorney and finalize a proposal that meets both parties, that meets both.
We're not, we don't have any trouble with that.
That, that would be very simple. That's sort of what we're asking today, but you sort of, you sort of sidestepped it to go.
What did I sidestep?
To go about, talking about the letter that you brought. In fact, you walked into the school and saw me as I waved to you.
I didn't see you.
Okay, you walked in, you didn't ask for me, because I was certainly available and would love to have talked to you about it. But this was addressed to Mrs. Williams.
Right.
Mrs. Williamson and I had spoken with our, with our legal counsel, and he suggested that we continue to meet with you here in this session.
That's fine. Well, it sounds like we're working on this.
Okay, and we would love nothing more than Mr. Hudson to work with our legal counsel to make sure we have a fair and equitable peace. And if you truly don't want to harm the schools, that would be something you would consider.
Absolutely. There's like absolutely no, no issue at all.
And it's similar to APL. It, it will take into account.
No, it's not similar.
No, no, what we're talking about moving forward.
Oh, the.
Moving forward.
Forward, excellent.
Right, absolutely, moving forward. And when we talk about the school funding part of this, and, and the position the school's in and things like that, just the same way as all of you are good stewards of the community's money, and that's your job, is to manage that money.
Actually.
It's the same job of the school district to manage that particular money, and that's what we entrust our treasurer to do.
Exactly.
But that doesn't mean just because we have money that we should give it away. Just the same way as if you had lots of money, that doesn't mean that you should give it away.
Or not have the same with where.
Right. So at this point, I mean, we have, we're educating these thirty, thirty-nine students, these individuals, wherever they're at in this, this school district.
There you go.
They're not paying, right? Their portion of their property tax, they're paying the portion of their income, the one percent.
In accordance with the CRA program.
So all we're looking to do is, is truly is, is to recap some of that dollars by the city reimbursing us. In addition to, if we could even, and that's moving forward, that's not the individuals that you've done with the CRA currently. Okay, that's moving forward, because it's no sense in going back. What's done is done. But also what we're asking is for the city to, to look at the term of the CRA, and let's look at possibly adjusting it so it's manageable for us in the school district. I mean, let's face it, what are these new developments in housing in Mahoning County? Read some of those.
Without, without CRAs. Quail Hollow in Boardman, Millennial Moments in Canfield, and it's a massive development. Summer Winds in Canfield, Berkeley in Boardman, Mystic Rock, Columbia, outside the city. Lakes at Sherrod Hill, North Lima, South Range Schools. Villa Teresa, Canfield, Villanora, Poland, Ridgely Park, Poland, Park Place, Poland, Stone Bridge, Canfield. Westbury Park, Canfield, Westford, Canfield, Reserve at Yellow Creek, Poland, Saxony Place, Struthers. Klingon Trails, Struthers, Walnut Grove, Struthers, Jackson Meadows, Jackson Milton. The Landings at Boulder Creek, Austintown, Meander Glen, Austintown, Carousel Corners, New Middletown, Harren Bay, Poland, Hampton Ridge, Poland. These are all new housing developments without CRAs.
Okay.
What is a CRA? Why was it instituted? Does anybody know the definition of why CRAs were started?
Can I just tell you one thing? I'll just say this real quickly.
Okay.
And, and again, I don't believe this is the place, and maybe somebody else here wants to comment, but we, the CRA program, since it started, has, has established a situation where over one hundred and twenty million dollars, this is residential, commercial, industrial development, has, has been private sector investment dollars have been invested in the City of Columbia. If I go to a meeting, if I go, if I go to any regional meeting, Columbia is the community people want to talk about. You guys are doing a great job. And I look around this community, and I see many of the new businesses that are going to be available for our students and to work in. The RL Carrier is setting up a regional hub here, our various commercial businesses. But, you know, we have a situation in our community where we have this opportunity to grow this housing. And I think if we come to this agreement that you're talking about, Scott, where, you know, we sit down, your attorney sits down with Mark, and you guys work, work out an agreement similar to the APL agreements. Of course, I don't vote, these gentlemen do, so many ladies do.
Does council feel comfortable doing this?
But to me, and based on the terms of the, of the study and, and the situation out with APL.
You folks feel comfortable with this, then? I just, are you gonna authorize Mark to, to meet with our attorney to come up with some kind of agreement that works well so that we aren't harmed?
Yeah.
That's all we're asking in the long run, is make sure the district isn't harmed.
Absolutely.
And it is unprecedented that there is.
I'd like to see some figures. I'd like to see figures on your end. We've, we've developed all these charts and graphs, and we went, had a study. We'd like, I'd like to see some figures.
That's pretty simple. That Mark, when he gets with our attorney, Mark understands, by me, right, school funding, he understands it completely. So with our attorney that specializes in it.
That's fine. I just thought I want to see some numbers.
And that, that would be absolutely wonderful, but we've given numbers, and let's face it, Mr. Souter, we've sat down in meetings, and that's, that's part of the reason why.
We're here.
Mayor, that we're here, because we've sat down in numerous meetings, and you haven't been a part of the CRA meetings, but we've had other meetings also. And you've been in them too.
Yeah.
And we've sat down and talked about this position of where we're at, and it goes absolutely nowhere. So we're, what we're looking to do is, is try to figure this out, and we could also, if we even wanted to, we could do a public forum at the school. We could invite people and have them come in, and we could have a discussion about the CRA, all the residents of Columbia, and try to go through it, how they feel about the whole thing. And, but the last thing I wanted to ask you folks is, is have you folks yearly, council, gone through and done a statement of the CRA yearly, of what it's done and where it's at, and how it's projected, and what it's doing? Because on your website, it has a statement that will be reviewed and reported yearly. Now, I have not seen anything, cannot find anything. And I'm a little bit, I was a little bit confused based on that, because it says that you're supposed to do these things. Have you done it?
We do reports.
No, I'm, I'm talking specifically on the CRA yearly.
Yes, sure.
So you have those reports that you can give to us tomorrow?
I already set, I mean, you have them.
No, I don't.
You have properties you've set me.
Properties. I'm talking about the report of the CRA and what's going on with it. Because it specifically states, as part of what you, how you set up the CRA, that there would be a yearly report. And obviously, the public, it should be open to the public so they can see what's going on, because.
Absolutely.
And, and, and I, I can see that you're clear in everything and what you want to do, because really, the public, it's their right to be able to see what you're doing with their dollars in this city.
Absolutely.
And you're all stewards of the community to protect their dollars. So with them looking at the CRA and what's going on, based on what it says, on how you wrote the CRA, there should be yearly reports on that. So we would look forward to seeing those yearly reports, Lance, from two thousand and nineteen to current. Well, obviously, it couldn't be, no, they're, no, they're, those are property reports. They're not specifically in reference to the CRA and those things that take place. It's specific in there how you wrote that, that it was supposed to be that. In addition to the CRA properties that the people put in the applications, those are supposed to be audited also.
They are, every year.
Okay, so, and you have all that information that we could see that also, and that's correct?
I'm sure you have it already, but.
No, we don't. We do not have it. You read?
I only have lists of properties. You gave me applications, properties, but not any kind of evaluation of how it's, how it's affected.
And we met to ask for an aggregate of what we were getting from the income tax for those properties. We've yet to get that. It's like missing five chapters out of a book.
No, we got the income.
Yeah, but it wasn't, it was part of it. It wasn't the aggregate that we were looking for. So we can identify and understand it. But that's, we do have to understand what you're, what's happening too.
We gave you a lot of information.
But yeah, we need, we need all of that.
We do need to communicate.
Yeah, and we need all of that, Mayor, so we can go through with Mr. Hudson and our attorney, if we can get that from Mike, because we're only getting portions. Now, listen, from two thousand and nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, I would say that the three years we should be able to get without no problem. I understand twenty-two and twenty-three because people are laying by our backs and things. Right. But we should be able to get three years.
Here's my question to you. I just, and I brought this up with, with you two a couple of years. Just my question, do you have information on, you know, what's your one, one, one percent income tax per, per each household unit?
That has to come from Mike.
You guys have.
No, our information is city information, isn't it, Mike?
Did you have people?
But what you're saying is the information on the school district income tax comes from the state.
We have order payment every year, four times a year.
It doesn't identify this or CRA property.
No, we don't see anything. No, we don't see none of it.
It's just, it's literally.
Because in all actuality, your one percent and the guidelines are different than the. Because in all actuality, your one percent and the guidelines are different than the city's. So we need to work out those. There's a lot of details to work out.
Correct.
We are happy and open, and I'm personally very proud of the CRA program. I think it's been a tremendous benefit to this community, and um that's my opinion. If you want to look at the reports, we'll give you all the reports and, you know, everybody can make their own judgment. But.
I would suggest that I'll be happy, I would imagine, that it's still Gary.
Still Gary.
All right. Why don't we set up a meeting for Gary and I to talk and start this process um so that we can exchange the information that's needed and us lawyers can do as we do, which is draft documents. Basically, can kind of like work for everybody.
That's what we'd like to see happen, Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Yes.
So. If, if I may.
About our five-year forecast instead of the last few other folks, that would be untransparent, is is the thing.
That's why we asked for me. We wanted to sit around the table, because you're absolutely right. I'll be honest with you. Uh it's a very difficult report to review, and you do a great job at getting it prepared.
Like everybody's forecast right now are not good because of Esser funds, like almost two million dollars that we got to supply it through Esser that we're gonna bring back in.
Very probably.
Yeah, yeah, you lose that. But that's why we wanted to meet, and we did want to meet. And I would have appreciated if you just would have told me what you would think.
But when you reach out to other treasures to ask how school funding is and not our own treasure, why didn't you do that?
Well, I I had, I just wanted to get the information and you didn't.
He's the one that has the information about Columbiana schools.
Well, it's, it, you, you act, actually, Lance and I got off the computer, you can go into the state. We didn't get it from the county.
But you could, I mean, she could, she could explain it to you. She can literally explain to you, lying for life.
But I think what's important is that, you know, Mark said.
So if if I may, hold on, if I may, why don't we go ahead and, I just want to, I'll go ahead and make a motion. Do you want to do it, Dick? Or I can, it doesn't matter.
Go ahead.
Um, I want to make a motion to go ahead and authorize Mark to begin the negotiations that we've discussed. And uh we'll just leave it at that. Go ahead and begin the negotiation we discussed.
I'll second that motion.
Any questions up here on the motion? Yami, call the roll.
Liston?
Yes.
Tilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the manager's report.
Thanks, Mayor. The, since the last meeting, we received notification that the EPA awarded us a fifty thousand dollar grant towards backup generator for our water wells number one and two. So uh that's gonna go a long ways of um getting us towards um, you know, having enough water for uh extended power outages. Uh we have scheduled an emergency assessment meeting with critical staff for mid-December. The, this exercise is part of our EPA requirement for emergency assessment, emergency preparedness program. Our new building department recommended that we have a registration process for contractors working in the community. We're still working on that. Um, see, we're also working on uh water and sewer rates with R cap. We're gonna come back uh early, early uh twenty twenty four to talk about that. We are gonna be updating our credit card policy uh for the city in regards to accounts. We have two, currently, we have two uh credit cards. Uh we're going to ask for those limits to be increased because of the the thirty day window. It's pretty complicated on on how they work, but you can't spend more than five thousand dollars over thirty day period on either the cards, which makes it a little bit difficult to to operate. So uh we are going to um get some legislation in front of you um probably in the next month. And as a city, we need to cover against risk. You've heard of performance bonds or insurance policy on our employees. We want to go with a new style of policy, and this is actually on the agenda tonight. It's called a faithful performance bonding program. The one blanket um limit that's spread all over the positions. This will eliminate the need for all the individual bonds that we we've had to do in the past. Uh persons can be taken off and added as needed. And we've placed that on um at, on the agenda uh tonight as first reading. We do have a few streets uh this, this uh fall that were recently finished. Um, and we are going to start that dedication accepting project process um out at uh Homestead. I believe you got a final coat out at Homestead, and Juniper and Hawkins did the same. So um thank you, Mark, for getting that ready for uh the agenda tonight. Uh tonight, we do have an emergency on the uh agenda. Uh we had that construction project go for uh the county line road sewer, and we need to uh renew that bond, and then this is the bond that'll be repaid through the special assessment process, which we will be um formalizing at the end of probably, probably next meeting, another meeting after that, calculating with, what we had to do is, now that the sewer is in, we had to uh get all the final cost, and then we'll have to pass final legislation here at council, and then notify the um property owners of the final assessment, and then we'll certify that to the county. And then their, their payments, their special assessments will end up paying that bond down over the, over the term of it. Mike uh prepared the end of the year financial adjustments and temporary budget legislation, so um that should be fun reading through the.
I saw Mike sitting up there.
Uh, street department, uh they did a lot of uh leaf collecting. Uh the weather was pretty good for uh for that this year. So uh we were able to um make some headway on that. We uh getting our snowplows already. Uh we did have a few issues with some trucks, but I think we're ready to go now. Water department, um you know, we've had a lot of construction. I've pointed it out that um, you know, each department, like water, sewer, electric, and uh we have to go out and when anybody digs something, they have to uh call it, call before you dig number. We've had four hundred and two of them in the past three months. So it's like the first hour of every day, our departments are out there checking you know, and marking, marking things. Now, that large gas, gas line that came through was was part of that, but uh it's just, it is a lot of work, and we do appreciate our staff for doing that. Water department, uh they did have fifty seven work orders that they did in the past three months too, so they're um excited to get that done. Million gallon tank is painted and it will be back in service, should be within the next week. Waste water department, um they're just performing maintenance and winterizing the plant. The uh park and cemetery mulch leaves in park and cemetery, which uh ended up saving some time um.
Yeah.
Working on the joy Christmas, winterizing maintenance of uh of summer equipment and installation of the uh kiosk uh started last week, week. Electric department, uh the service for Wendy's is coming along while the pad and the cabinet was set. I'm sure everybody in the community is excited to see that project is moving again. Um, it's the uh lights for the Columbiana Park Plaza lot uh were installed, and the temporary meters for the new Salem Regional Medical Center facility is uh they're on, you know, they, they were able to uh remove the, the temporary meters, and they're on the permanent meters. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. You all received a copy of the bill list of twelve, five, two thousand twenty three. Are there any questions or comments on the bill list? Uh hearing none, they'll be accepted as submitted. Now, as Lance alluded to, I want to warn everybody whenever Mike comes into the meetings, uh and I have to read these motions. Um, it puts me on a roller coaster, so um just want you to be aware of that. Uh so I'd like to start with before, before old business, I'd like to entertain a motion to read all resolutions and ordinances by title only.
So moved, second.
Yami, call the roll.
Tilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Okay, old business resolution number twenty three dash R dash six three five, second reading. A resolution authorizing the city manager to execute and file an application to obtain federal financial assistance under the Disaster Relief Act.
So moved. Second.
Motion is second. Any questions? Yami, call the roll.
Banner?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
D'Atilio?
Yes.
Hmm, ordinance number twenty three dash O dash three one nine seven, second reading. An ordinance authorizing city manager to enter into a contract with Anthem Blue Cross and Blue Shield for the purpose of providing health insurance benefits for the full-time employees of the city of Columbiana.
So moved. Second.
Yami, call the roll.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
D'Atilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty three dash O dash three one nine eight, second reading. An ordinance amending municipal income tax provision of the city of Columbiana set forth in chapter eight eight one of the codified ordinances of the city of Columbiana.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Questions? Yami, call the roll.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
D'Atilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
New business. Motion to accept fund fiscal officer certificate, six hundred and forty one thousand special assessment notes.
So moved, second.
Motion is second. Question on the motion?
Are we gonna make Mike talk about this?
No.
No, okay. Nope, we're good.
Yami, call the roll.
Liston?
Yes.
Tilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
We'd entertain a motion to uh read the following motion as an emergency.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, to read this motion as an emergency. Uh, Yami, call the roll.
Tilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty three dash O dash three one nine nine, emergency. An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of not to exceed six hundred and forty one thousand of notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying, in anticipation of the levy and collection of special assessments. The property owner's portion and the city's portion of the cost of constructing sanitary sewers together with manholes and service connections, therefore, together with all necessary appetites thereto, and by installing and replacing paving as necessary to extend sanitary sewer service along county line road between certain termini and declaring an emergency.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. We're just getting warmed up. Yami, call the roll.
Banner?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
D'Atilio?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty three dash O dash three two zero zero, first reading. An ordinance establishing dates of regularly scheduled council meetings and meetings of boards and commissions for the county year twenty twenty four, and directing the publishing and posting of this ordinance.
So moved, second.
Motion is second. Yami, call the roll.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
D'Atilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Resolution number twenty three dash R dash six three six, first reading. A resolution for blanket employee dishonesty and faithful performance of duty policy coverage for all employees of the city of Columbiana.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Yami, call the roll.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
D'Atilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty three dash O dash three two zero one, first reading. An ordinance amending appropriation ordinance twenty three dash O dash three one six five by adding two hundred eighty three thousand dollars in the general fund, seventy two thousand dollars in the park fund, twenty one thousand dollars in the cemetery fund, thirty one thousand dollars in the police pension fund, three hundred fifty nine thousand dollars in the water fund, twenty three thousand dollars in the sewer fund, one hundred six thousand dollars in the electric fund, thirty one thousand dollars in the street fund, one hundred forty four thousand dollars in the fire fund, one hundred seventy five thousand dollars in the EMS fund, six thousand dollars in the income tax fund, one thousand six hundred seventy dollars in the enforcement and education fund, and forty dollars in the escrow fund, all for the payment of current expenses as they may arise.
So moved.
Second.
Did I hear a second?
Second.
Thanks, Mike. Uh, Yami, call the roll.
Liston?
Yes.
D'Atilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty three dash O dash three two O two, first reading. An ordinance transferring four hundred thousand dollars from the income tax fund, two hundred thousand dollars to the general fund, and two hundred thousand dollars to the capital improvement fund, all for the payment of current expenses as they may arise.
So moved.
Second.
Second, I'm sorry, a sneeze. Um, Yami, you call the roll.
Tilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty three dash O dash three two O three, first reading. An ordinance transferring one hundred forty five thousand dollars from the general fund, seventy thousand dollars to the park fund, fifty thousand dollars to the cemetery fund, and twenty five thousand dollars to the police pension fund, all for the payment of current expenses as they may arise.
So moved. Second.
Motion is second. Yami, call the roll.
Banner?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
D'Atilio?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty three dash O dash three two zero four, first reading. An ordinance to make temporary appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures in the city of Columbiana, state of Ohio, for the first three months of the year twenty twenty four, ending March thirty one, twenty twenty four.
So moved.
Second. Second.
Motion is second. Dami, you call the roll?
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Tilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-three dash O dash three two O five. First reading. An ordinance accepting streets, curbs and storm drains on portions of Hawkins Lane. And Juniper Drive located in the Cedar Run, Cedar Run developed subdivision number two.
So moved, second.
Motion is second. Dami, you call the roll?
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Tilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-three dash O dash three two zero six, first reading. An ordinance accepting streets, curbs and storm drains on Homestead Drive located in Firestone Farms Plats one, two and three.
So moved. Second.
Motion is second. Any questions? Dami Calderol?
Liston?
Yes.
Tilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Okay, we've come to the end of our ordinances and resolutions, old and new business. Uh, at this time, I would like to ask if anyone out there. Would like to make a comment or a any observations, anything they'd like to say? Yes. Okay, so did you get where that, does everybody know where he's happening? You repeat the location?
It's down on South Main Street past. It's right down by where you went. Ford Duquesne.
Before Duquesne, that area there, okay.
Oh, from pretty much the railroad tracks down to where.
Yes, so I'm not exactly sure where it's at, but they are working on it and I believe they're going to take out that green pole soon. And put a wooden pole there in its place and and put a new light in.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Okay, well, good. Are there any council comments? It's very quiet, very good. Well, thank you very much. That was a fun filled hour. And um, so thank you very much and uh I look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Take an adjourn.